So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, so welcome everyone to the December meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. Roll call please.
Albrecht.
Here.
Buckley is excused, Gross.
Here.
LaBelle.
Here.
Lap.
Here.
Shingles is excused, Thering.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
And Squaterito.
Here.
All right, we have everyone but two.
All right, thank you. So, next item is approval of the agenda, so you have tonight's agenda. It has some items that we've seen before. The final site plan application, zoning text amendments, and the redevelopment-ready communities program. Is there anything else that anyone is aware of that needs to be on tonight's agenda? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda.
No movement.
Spark.
Motion is by Williams, second by Gross, further discussion. All those in favor of approving the agenda as prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we have our agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes. We last met on November fifteenth, so you have the November fifteenth regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the November fifteenth minutes? If not, we can have a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gross, second by Lap to approve the November fifteenth minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So, next item is correspondence, board reports, presentations. First item is Commissioner Thering, updates from Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Our last meeting, we approved the 2023 budget. A few changes were made kind of at the last, during that meeting. One of the changes, we, in discussion of our ARPA funds, we had talked about potentially putting some of our ARPA funds on capital projects, being sewer, make sure I get this right, sewer on pump station one and water, high-service pump. And the sewer was about $500,000 and the water was around $200,000. And the discussion was a great discussion, I mean, we all want to keep our, we don't want to have to borrow if we don't have to. But we also didn't really feel, I think as a group, that we had enough discussion about what other things could those ARPA funds go for? Because the sewer and water departments are designed to be self-sufficient, and they are. But maybe that's something after our discussion that will, you know, we'll say, you know what, maybe that's the best place for it, or maybe we'll come up with a different, something different for those ARPA funds. So if anybody has any thoughts on that, please come to our next meeting and/or email the Board of Trustees with any thoughts you may have on that. Another change that was made, was discussed and agreed to by a trustee and the board in regards to a, some sort of citizen survey project. So we have $16,000 being appropriated into the manager's budget to go towards something like that. And that's a way for the board to have its connection with the citizens. Can, wide range of questions I'm sure will be asked. It's something we haven't really discussed the particulars on, but we know that we haven't done something like that in a little while, so we want to, we want to talk about something like that and consider. Also, the Board of Trustees accepted the resignation of trustee Bill Hauck. He was elected to the Isabel County Road Commission, and so we now have a vacancy. Anybody who may be interested in that position, you can get an application, I think, from Tara, and apply before or on January sixteenth, end of day. That, that's what I have in a nutshell.
Questions for Commissioner Thering from other commissioners?
What are the guidelines for the ARPA funds? Are they, is it pretty wide open, or do you have some direction?
They, they have been more relaxed than they were in the beginning. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to say that there aren't some, I'm sure there's something, but, yeah, that's really about all I can say. I mean, I, you have to find, I'm sure there are some guidelines to follow, but what they were from the beginning when we found out this is what we're getting and you could only do this, it's been, it's been more relaxed. So, any thoughts on that? I mean, shoot us an email, the board an email on your thoughts on the ARPA funds. The capital projects again are kind of hard to ignore because you want to be fiscally responsible. If we can, if we can do something to improve our sewer and water, that's great. But not everybody has sewer, not everybody has water and/or, you know, in that respect. So, we want to take a look at all the opportunities, and then once we feel like we have, then we'll, we'll make some sort of decision, and hopefully it's with the help of the citizens.
Other questions? Let me ask you a quick one. It isn't something I would necessarily expect you to know the answer to, but it's occurred to me. So, we had talked several times about the, the major road project at Lincoln and Broomfield, which reopened shortly after our last meeting, so before Thanksgiving. I was under the impression that Lincoln was going to add, they were going to add the third lane all the way from the bridge to the intersection. And so I was surprised to see that it still went down to two lanes and then backed out. Am I wrong about that, or, or why? I'm just curious.
Well, I, I'll let Rodney answer. I mean, I know this project that we, that they did, that's as far as it was going to go. Now, prior to that, I don't know if that was talked about prior to that, or if that's something that's up and coming.
Sorry, so the issue actually is with easements. The property owners cross the street from one another. The two properties would not provide easements to allow the road to be widened to three lanes. And so, in the end, the decision was made to work with those property owners. They were able to get grading easements, allowed them to reslope the sides, but they could not add the additional width, so the road had to slide in or slide out.
And the, the desire is still to, to, I mean, the reason the bridge was built as wide as it was is because the goal is to ultimately have it be three lanes all the way, right?
Well, it was actually built for five lanes.
Yeah. Okay. A cynic would, a cynic would suggest that there's some sort of master plan behind the scenes for that road to be closed as many times as possible, going henceforth into the future.
Thanks Rodney. Appreciate you jumping in.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
I would like to say that, you know, working with trustee Hauck has been an honor to work with him. He's somebody that really put his money where his mouth was. He was very in tune with the citizens. He really did a good job of reaching out, and he will definitely be missed.
Okay, thank you. I'm guessing the next two reports will be short because the individuals responsible for them are not here. Buckley, updates from ZBA. I believe I saw, didn't I see in the paper today or somewhere that the next meeting has been canceled?
Yes, we did have a meeting in December.
Yes.
That I'm sure he would like to report on. It's actually, we actually report on it in our Arizona Amendment documentation. But yes, the January meeting has been canceled. The next meeting we're expecting is in February, we'll do some training for, because we have several new ZBA members now.
Okay, so perhaps we can defer further discussion of, of the outcome of the December meeting until we get to that item in the agenda, if that's, unless anyone has questions now. And then Commissioner Shingles, updates from sidewalks and pathways. Stan is not here. They, they were going to meet, right?
They, they were supposed to meet in October. Did not have a court, so the meeting was canceled. They will be, or members of the committee are will be invited to your meeting in January.
Right.
So that would be next time they get to get it, but it won't be a formal meeting for that committee.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments on those two other bodies? Okay, anybody else have anything that they are aware of that needs to be reported and/or presented? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and close that back up. So, at this point, we have the first public comment portion of the meeting. This is the, what you might call early public comment, which is restricted to items that are not on the agenda. So we have at least one public hearing scheduled for tonight, and so that will take place on its own. And we also have extended public comment later in the meeting. This is public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to address the planning commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, they're welcome to do so at this time. We just ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at seven thirteen. We will assume that everyone is here for other purposes, so we'll go ahead and close that back up, but we will have more public comment opportunities later in the meeting. All right, we don't have any new business, we just have other business, so we'll move directly to other business. First one is PSPR twenty-two dash nineteen, Prestige Center Assisted Living and Memory Care Expansion. This is the updated final site plan application. We approved the preliminary site plan at our previous meeting, and so now they're back with the updated final site plan. So I will first turn it over to Rodney, and then we will hear from the applicant, and then we'll deliberate.
Well, thank you. Everybody should have our, a copy of our report dated December thirteenth, a copy of the site plan, which is dated November sixteenth. As was mentioned, this is something we saw just recently. We saw the combined community final site plan where you approved just a preliminary version. So this is the updated final site plan that's coming back to you for approval. In our report, we did note that there are some, some details that need to be addressed. To some extent, we might even call it a little bit more than housekeeping, but a few of them are easy, relatively easy. We noted that the sidewalk along the, along the front of the property, along Broadway, on the western end was terminating into the fence that, for the neighboring lot. That's not appropriate, it's not helpful, and so we asked that that be adjusted to angle out to be able to meet a future sidewalk in the existing property. We had the same problem at the, at the eastern end, or at least there's a question on the eastern end, about where that sidewalk needs to terminate. The challenge is that the road right-of-way in this area, Broadway, kind of goes in and out. And on this property, it happens to be wider. It's a fifty-foot half right-of-way instead of kind of standard thirty-three feet. So at some point in the past, additional right-of-way was secured. But that right-of-way doesn't necessarily exist on all the property. Certainly, the property to the west is actually narrower, thirty-three feet. And so, they just have some housekeeping details to take care of in the sidewalk. They also have some housekeeping details related to the existing landscaping. That's, that's very overgrown on the, on the western half of the property in front of existing assisted living buildings. And that actually, in terms of looking at it from a sidewalk, for pedestrian perspective, that's actually not safe. Those bushes are so overgrown, and the sidewalk is going to be on the inside rather than on the roadside. And so it creates an opportunity for mischief, a place for people to hide. And so they really do need to do something to tame, tame the overgrown shrubbery there and create a little more visibility for the sidewalk. The challenge is existing landscaping was actually planted in the road right-of-way. If you drive along there, it's actually not far in from the curb. Now, it's been there for many years. We don't allow that now, but, but it's there. And so they, the options are either take all of that out and put the sidewalk there, or because they have additional right-of-way, they can put the sidewalk on the inside, which is what they proposed to do. But they still do need to kind of clean that up, and so we've asked them as part of our report to, to address how that existing landscaping is going to be pruned and maintained. There was a detail related to the trash enclosure that needs to be taken care of. But the, the big item that's really kind of more than housekeeping is the landscaping plan. As we note in our report, it, it doesn't meet the minimum requirements for, for landscaping along the road frontage. And here, we're really talking about the eastern half of the road frontage. Existing landscaping is what it is. Existing can meet the requirement of that part. But the eastern half, where they have some new plantings, is very sparse. What we found was it didn't, it was less than fifty percent of the minimum requirement for landscaping in that area. The applicant has the option to propose an alternative design for you. Our ordinance has a lot of flexibility built in, where it allows the planning commission to approve modifications. But as part of that, they need to show how they meet the requirements from approval of a modified modification. Section ten point seven has some very basic criteria in it, talking about meeting the intent of the landscaping requirements. And there was no effort to, to show how they met that. They just simply are proposing, essentially, they're asking you to grant them a variance by allowing much less landscaping than the minimum that the ordinance would require. That's not the intent of the modification section. So we just noted that, that either they need to come back with a better, updated plan, and if they're going to propose an alternative design, they need to really give you some reasons why that you can work with to see that they meet that section ten point seven requirement. Or they, or they simply need to meet the minimum standards, which are not hard to meet. The, from, from our perspective, we're comfortable with, with recommending this, this plan to you for approval tonight, subject to several conditions, one of which is an updated landscape plan. If, if you choose to do that, they would have to meet the minimum requirement. The staff, the staff, we can't grant them a modification. So, if your preference is to see an updated plan, where you might be able to look at something, something more, more complete and more consistent with section ten point seven, then, then tonight we'd have postponed action and have them update the plan again, and come back before you in January. So that's essentially where we stand. As I said, we do have a recommendation for approval. It has the four conditions associated with it. The most significant, that is the requirement for an updated landscape plan. With that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Are there any immediate questions for Rodney? He's obviously not going far, so.
Just a, you'd mentioned about where the bushes are, and that they're overgrown, and so if they were to put it on the inside, that it would create a safety hazard. Said that you've recommended that they trim them. Are they required to do that, or are you just recommending that?
Well, it's a safety hazard. And first of all, the bushes are in the road. The road commission can order them to be removed anytime they want, because it's in their road right-of-way. But in addition, it really is a safety hazard. They block visibility through, and because of their low kind of a hedgerow, not a consistent hedgerow, but mostly consistent, out because they've grown together, it creates places for people to hide that are going to behave badly. And, and so it creates a safety hazard for pedestrians on that sidewalk. And so with that in mind, just like any, any commercial site, you need to take care of your landscaping, trim it down, clean it up, prune, weed, all those kinds of things. These simply, nothing's been done with them for a very long time. And so they've been allowed to kind of grow wild. And, and so they could easily bring them in, prune them in, and create some visual breaks and, and eliminate the places where people could hide, while, while still having those, those bushes there.
Yeah, I appreciate the additional information, but my question was, are they required to by the ordinance? Or are you recommending it because of your, your thinking, you consider it a safety hazard? That was my question.
Okay, no, we have, we have basic landscape maintenance standards in the ordinance, so they, yes, they're required to maintain.
So it's, it's in the ordinance, it's required for them to prune those if they put the sidewalk on the other side, is what you're saying?
Well, they're required to maintain them anyway. It doesn't matter if there's a sidewalk there or not.
Right, but, but how a property owner maintains it and how you view the maintenance may be different. I'm just asking if it's required in the ordinance to do what you're suggesting.
All I can say is it's required to maintain it, the landscaping. Does it, does it say thou shalt prune it to this height? No, of course not. But that's why I'm asking for them to update their plan to show us how they're going to do it.
Okay.
That's all.
So it's, it's not required, it's not required in the ordinance, it's just a recommendation?
No, the maintenance is required, the details are up to them.
Yeah, but, but I understand that, but what, but somebody's maintenance and your maintenance might be different. So they can maintain it, but if it's maybe four inches higher than you would like it, you're saying you could enforce that?
Oh, what would happen with this? No, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Let me, let me put it to you this way. Let's say that this plan is approved tonight. One of the conditions is provide a maintenance, maintenance details. So they would provide the maintenance details. All we would do is take a look at the maintenance details, take a look at the section that says thou shalt maintain it, and confirm, yep, they're, they're going to maintain it, and we're done. And then they go forth and do it. We, when they do it, we come out and take a look and say thank you very much. So it, it really is up to them to decide how they're going to maintain it. Our part is simply to verify that it's going to be maintained.
Okay, so if, if I'm the applicant and I say I'm just gonna, I'm going to trim them and maintain them, that would suffice?
What, I would hope a little bit more detail, but yes, that's essentially what we're doing.
So that's what I'm asking, what detail do you need to make that work, is my question?
It just needs to match the ordinance, that's all.
But, but you just said it just needs to be maintained. So like I said, if there's specifics, what are those specifics under your, under your control? What, what are you trying to tell them?
Exactly what we said here.
So what is that?
Need to, just what we said in our document.
You said maintain or trim them, but I'm asking for specifics, because if, if somebody's difference in maintaining is, so what are the specifics that you would expect, is my question Rodney? It's not that hard of a question.
It's not that hard, and it's not that hard of an answer. Number three in the conditions that we've recommended, the last part of it, says, include provisions for pruning and maintenance of the existing landscaping along the road frontage to provide for adequate visibility for pedestrians.
Okay, so is there a height, is there a height restriction?
No.
Right, so, so if they're, how tall are they now, six feet?
It varies.
Okay, so somewhere in there. So if they trim it to five feet, that's maintaining and pruning. But that may not rectify what you're, what you're suggesting. That's what, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make sure that they don't run into another issue because of how you think and what they're, what they're saying they're doing.
I must respectfully disagree, that, that would not meet my, what I'm looking for. I frankly.
Not what you're looking for, or the ordinance?
What this says right here. Include provisions for pruning and maintenance of the existing landscaping along the road frontage to provide for adequate visibility for pedestrians. That's what, that's what we're looking for, that's what is expected, that's consistent with the ordinance.
So what height would that be with adequate visibility? Three feet, two feet, one foot, four foot? What would be adequate visibility that, that would, that they would meet the ordinance? What would be adequate visibility that that would, that they would meet the ordinance? You don't know the answer to that because they're, because it's not required. That's my point.
No, it's not that it's not required, it's that the applicant can take a look at what they've got and they can make that determination, simply put it on the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Rodney while he's up there?
Regarding the plantings that are in the right of way, can those be counted towards the requirements or not because they could be required to be removed at any time by the road commission?
We aren't, we didn't address that any further. We're accepting them, they're there, assuming they were lawfully planted. We simply note that they cannot put the new ones in the right of way.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions for Rodney? Okay, thank you. All of you sit down for now. So at this point, we can hear from the applicant, so whatever you'd like to say to us, and then we'll have questions and deliberation.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Justin Longstrath with More &amp; Brujing, Civil Engineers. Prepared the site plans that are before you tonight. We've been in front of this commission a couple of times, so I don't have a ton to add, but I guess maybe just go through the conditions that were in the staff report. I think many of these are pretty easy for us to to address. But starting with the sidewalk, we typically, as a standard sidewalk location within a right of way, place the back of the sidewalk within one foot of the right of way line, which is why our section of sidewalk is pushed as far away from the road as what it is. I realize that maybe the property owners to either side of us don't have as wide of a right of way section. So we're perfectly acceptable with relocating that and moving that. We just want to make sure that we have road commission involvement in that discussion because it is their right of way and we want to make sure that we're consistent with what they would require. But otherwise, to slide that forward, to move around a neighbor's fence, no problem with that at all. Trash enclosure, that's an easy detail to change the facade of the trash enclosure, absolutely can do that. And then the landscaping, so I think that there was maybe a miscommunication on our part as to what the intent of the landscape was, thinking that it was maybe more screening the property from the roadway. It actually would be our preference to trim and prune back some of those existing shrubs that are in the right of way to create more of a visual cue back to the building, wanting to open that up. But we took it as, hey, we have this landscaping in place to block the view of the property, that's a good thing, but if it's not, we would love to trim those back. So that's one thing. And then the other was just maybe my lack of understanding of what the zoning ordinance section, what latitude that provides us as far as an alternative landscaping design. I think for tonight's discussion, it would be just as easy to approve it based on the zoning ordinance requirements. We'll revise our landscape plan to meet the plant number and species for the entire length and just be done with it, as opposed to having to come back again for another meeting to talk landscaping, so.
Question through the applicant?
I mean, I don't see any major issues. When did you become aware, I'm just curious, of these conditions? When were you approving this?
I think they received the staff letter maybe a week or so ago. I don't remember the date, but it's been maybe a week.
And you guys have been working on this project for how long?
I think that we were first in front of you guys maybe in the summer, June, July, something like that was when they first came to start the PUD process, or the rezon or whatever it was at that time. It's been a while.
Yeah. I just wonder if you had that information ahead of time, like if that could have maybe circumvented you being here tonight, looking for approval with conditions, you know what I'm saying? If, yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of, it seems like it's broken record, but I'm just curious why he's, we didn't have that information for him on everything, or pretty close to it, previous, I mean, this thing's been going on and on, so that we're not sitting here tonight looking at a final with more conditions. I mean, could this not, you know, could this not have been, had a discussion or phone calls, say, hey, you know, here's where we're lacking, so they had time to maybe remedy this? Now, you know, we're looking at, we're in December, and, I mean, it just seems to me that there's some steps that could, you know, and we've talked about this on almost every project, it just seems like, maybe I'm missing something. But it just seems like dumpster enclosure, and they're waiting for possibly six months into the process to be told, you need a dumpster enclosure?
So I, I think that.
Am I missing something?
No, we did have a dumpster enclosure on our plans. I think that it was maybe the wrong material, possibly, on that particular item. I don't have that detail in front of me, so I can't speak. But I think it wasn't that we were planning to not have an enclosure, it was just that the enclosure maybe was not, not a masonry or a solid wood fence enclosure. We maybe had something different, a vinyl fence or something.
I gotcha.
So.
Okay, that's.
So the only one that really has been on the list for a while, and we knew it going in, was the requirement to combine the parcels. We knew that for a long time, that's probably something that you guys talked about in the summer. We have had it not in this township, but in other municipalities where we did a lot combination and then we weren't granted approval for the project that we were going for. And so we've been burned in the past on things like that. So we're fully aware of that and will do that before a building permit application, but we wanted to make sure that we received our final site plan approval before we went down that path, if for whatever reason it wasn't approved, so.
Thank you, that answered my question. I do have a question about, and maybe this is related to the landscaping. Are you doing anything on the eastern side of this property at this point, or is that going to remain vacant until you decide what you can do with it?
At this point, it's going to remain vacant.
Okay. And the water main is just being sort of elbowed around the entryway there?
Yeah. Our building addition does bump out into where the current water main location is.
Okay.
So we're just doing a very minor relocation to bump it out beyond the addition.
Okay.
Correct.
And Rodney, if we do, if we do approve it with the conditions, you can administratively review and approve the landscaping, that doesn't have to come back in front of us again?
As long as they meet the minimum standards, yes, we can. With your agreement and with the conditions that are shown, we can take care of that as administrative action. If I may, just add a quick comment. The final site plan that's before you is reviewed by multiple agencies. This is an answer to Mr. Williams' comments. It, as noted in our report, is reviewed by multiple outside agencies, also our Public Services Department. The plans that you see, we want to make sure that they are the same plans that were reviewed by these, all these agencies. Because the idea is that this is the plan, everybody's looked at and says, yes, we're good with it, meets all of our requirements, it can go forward. The idea with final site plan approval is the next step is a building permit. Now here, we're talking about, we don't, we're not fan of the conditions, other than some minor housekeeping things. The land combination, by the way, certainly is housekeeping. The rest of them are a little beyond housekeeping, but still within, within reason to be able to handle administratively if need. But the goal is, is that the final site plan is ready to go. The requirements, things like the trash enclosure, are in the ordinance. The landscaping standards are in the ordinance. The requirement related to sidewalks, that comment that they need to angle the sidewalk out is certainly not in the ordinance. The ordinance does not say specifically where the sidewalk needs to go, other than it has to be within an easement or within the public right of way. But this is really a logic item, that you can't run a sidewalk into a fence, the sidewalk is useless. And so this is a, simply a logic thing, looking at the site, it should have been addressed. But but in reality, the key here is that these plans come into our office about three weeks before your meeting. Some a little bit earlier, but some unfortunately a little short of that three weeks. If we, if we can do it, we will accept plans, work with people, even if they're a little shorter than three weeks. But we have a normally three-week deadline. Well, the plans come to you and our reports come to you a week before. So we basically have two weeks to review them and put together the report. And so that's the timing that's involved. And that's why the gentleman noted that he received the report about a week. He received it a day or so before you did. And basically, as soon as the report's ready, we make sure the applicant has it. But it's not a circumstance where they're going to be revising the plan and giving you a new plan at the meeting, or giving you a new plan just beforehand, because that is a plan that nobody's reviewed. So that's how this process is designed to work, to make sure you are seeing the same thing that these other reporting agencies have seen and are reporting back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from commissioners, questions? We can certainly have a motion if people are there.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve PSPR twenty-two dash nineteen, updated final site plan dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two for the Prestige Center. Assisted living and memory care expansion located at fifty-seven eighty-five East Broadway Road in the northeast quarter of section thirteen and in the PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District, finding that the site plan can comply with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for final site plan approval, including sections fourteen point two point P, required site plan information, and fourteen point two point S, standards for site plan approval, subject to the following findings and conditions. Number one, revise the eastern and western ends of the proposed sidewalk along the road frontage as needed for consistency with road rights of way and future connections. Number two, revise the trash enclosure to either a decorative masonry wall or a solid wood fence per section seven point one four standards. Number three, the alternative landscape design depicted on seven of eight is not accepted due to incomplete information and inconsistency with ten point seven, ten point seven modifications criteria. Revise the landscape plan to satisfy the minimum standards of section ten, with all proposed tree and shrub plantings to be located entirely outside the road right of way, and include provisions for pruning and maintenance of the existing landscaping along the road frontage to provide adequate visibility for pedestrians. The required land combination shall be completed by the applicant, sorry, number four, the required land combination shall be completed by the applicant, and revised final site plan and landscape plan shall be subject to review and acceptance by the zoning administrator prior to issuance of a building permit for project.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion, motion was made by LaBelle, was seconded by Lapp. Further discussion? All right, hearing on, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Williams?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
And Lapp?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
All right, thank you. So, next item under other business is the zoning ordinance text amendments, punch list number two. So again, we'll have some brief remarks by Rodney, then we'll move to the public hearing. We'll have questions and deliberation from commissioners, and we will work our way through that.
Well, thank you. The, these amendments that you have seen, largely you have seen previously, I'll just briefly, background, this is essentially a second set of punch list items that we're working with the new ordinance, and as items come up that we note are, in some way, indeed a need of correction or adjustment, Peter and I have simply made notes in those, and then out of those notes came what you have before you. We take care of some gaps and a lot of uses, regular fight conflicts, update the planning development section, adding more flexibility to it, update standards for self-storage buildings, and also update the zoning board appeals section, take care of inconsistencies with the state act. And then the additional item that you have last page of the set of amendments that you have before you is, is in addition to what you saw of the previous month. And it's just one sheet, it's titled Additional Proposal of Your Ordinance Amendments. And this comes out of our recent zoning board appeal. And to give a little background on our board appeals meeting, which was on December seventh, we had the Thrive Community Church, they had requested an interpretation of the zoning ordinance text, specifically looking at the definition of religious institution and looking at a statement of use, a detailed statement of use that they had proposed, asking the zoning board appeals to make a determination that what they had proposed to do on property B seven district fit all within the definition of religious institution. They have not applied for anything formally, they did not receive anything from the township formally in terms of any kind of interpretation or determination by the zoning administrator. This application came at a time when we had been encouraging them to come before this body to do exactly that process. There's a church requires site plan approval in the B seven district. One of the requirements on a preliminary site plan is a detailed statement of use. What are you going to do with the property? And we ask it to be concluded on the site plan. And normally, it's part of, what is reviewed, is part of reviewing the site plan, is looking at the use. Now, in most cases, there's no question that use fits within the zoning boundary. But even if there is a question, then we encourage them to come before the planning commission and get to address that. They chose to go to the board of appeals instead, and the board of appeals does have authority to interpret the text. So here it was held on December seventh. Out of that ultimately came a motion to, to find that most of the activities, not all, but most of the activities that they have listed in their proposed statement of use, the board of appeals found to be consistent with the definition of religious institution, essentially finding that most were accessory use, secondary activities as part of a church or a religious facility. The one that was on the list that they did not, that the board of appeals did not act on, was the church had proposed to have an outdoor recreation facility for both church members and the public, essentially when you create a public park, the back, the back half of the property. And the zoning board appeals did not rule on that, they deferred that to the planning commission. At this point, we don't, we haven't seen a plan, we don't have any details, all we know is what they, what they've shared with us over the past year or two, year and a half. So that's the scope of what board of appeals did. Out of that, it was a recognition that we need to make some adjustments to address that essentially in the, in the ordinance. One of the challenges we have with, that came up, one of the reasons why this came up, is that the B seven district is different than the other two business districts. All through this process, we started meeting with Thrive Church leadership in twenty twenty-one, that came in twenty twenty-one, as they were exploring options. And we encouraged them at that time, based on what they were describing as to what they wanted to do, we said, you really should be in the B four district. And later on, we added the B five because they're basically the same set standards. The B four and the B five allow both religious institutions and such nonreligious places of public assembly, theaters, council halls, and other places of public assembly. They're both allowed by right, simply to site plan approval. So they, the church was looking for the opportunity to have a facility that's not just a church, but also a community center, also a, essentially a council, opportunity for, invite community groups to come in, dance recitals, have graduation ceremonies, all sorts of secular nonreligious public assembly activities. So we suggested and recommended them, they look at the B four or the B five, where they can do both, come in, get your site plan approval, and go forth. Unfortunately, they they selected a property, the B7 district, and focused on that one. It happens that the B7 district, and for reasons I I don't know, but B7 district does not allow the, well, it's religious institutions, but interestingly, does not allow the theaters, council halls, and other nonreligious places of public assembly. It's simply different than the other two districts. And so that narrows the scope of activity that that they can use their building for. It's a far tighter box that they they would end up in potentially. This is largely what they wanted the zoning board appeals to address, to give them idea of exactly where the box walls are, so they have certainty before they put together a site plan. That was mentioned during the during the year. So the Board of Appeals gave them certainly at least their follow up responses. I expect we'll be seeing the site plan from them at some point in the future. But as part of that, out of that, then, was a recognition that we should at least bring before you the idea of addressing these concerns that were raised in in the ordinance. Well, since we have the ordinance open essentially at this point. So what we brought before you in this additional proposed zoning ordinance amendment is, number one, to update the definition of religious institution. And the language you see here is is basically coming right from the motion that was made. Pieces of this are directly out of the out of the zoning board appeals motion. It's intended both to make it clear that the that the things that they found are accessory uses are are listed here as accessory uses and acknowledged, but also to add some clarity to 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 limit ambiguities that are in the current definition. Current definition, for example, talks about accessory uses or associated uses as including but are not necessarily limited to, that's a very broad statement. And so what we want to do here is to say, no, these these things are included, but not have this kind of broad and everything else as well kind of kind of language, which is not helpful to, it it just creates uncertainty, creates the exact circumstance that led to the to the request for Board of Appeals interpretation. So that that's the definition change to religious institution. Then the other change is to propose to add the theaters, council halls, and other places of public assembly to the B7. So that all three business districts will have, allow both religious and nonreligious public assembly, both simply with site plan approval. Those are the changes you see there. I'm happy to answer your questions about Board of Appeals action, about this additional change. The the set of motions that we prepared, you'll see includes the reference to this additional sheet. So if you're comfortable with it, I encourage you to include it. If you if you're not comfortable with it, you can simply leave that part out and we can continue to have a discussion on those. With that, I'm happy to answer your questions, let me go along.
So if this language had been in the ordinance already, then there wouldn't have been any particular question about that application, about the aspect of that application, of their desire to hold what we might describe as somewhat more secular public gatherings, is that accurate?
Well, I will say this, that if this this amendment, if this was the language that was in the current ordinance, it certainly removes some of the ambiguity that's in the current definition. I I cannot say that the applicant would not have applied anyway for an interpretation. They had a very definite idea of what they wanted. And and I respect that, they they want to have some certainty before they spend a significant amount of money to put a site plan together. And and I certainly respect that. We we told them that they they could come before you in an informal manner, that we've done that before, where we've had people come in and make presentations. They could have shared their idea, their proposal with you. It gotten not not action, but gotten comments from you, is what you thought. They could even come in with a preliminary site plan, which it's a little more than a concept plan, but it's not it's not a fully engineered site plan and dealt with the use statement as part of that, which is, is the path that we had strongly recommended to them. So they may still have applied to the zoning board appeals regardless of what the ordinance said, but.
But wasn't, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to relitigate this, but wasn't wasn't there concern primarily piqued by hesitancy on you all's part about what they were wanting to do and whether it fit the ordinance or not?
So what, in our conversations, and please understand, we meet with people all the time. This is informal, we simply sit down, we talked about what the ordinance requires, and we talked about the site plan approval process, what's expected, what their options are, just as we talked with with the folks that were just before you about the idea of a combined preliminary final site plan. Since you'd already seen the site plan as part of a PUD application, we said you could propose to combine them together. But if you do that, and this is what we tell people, in that case, we always say, you need to be very careful to make sure you're following all the ordinance requirements. Look at the details, fly spec it, because that's the expectation, is that it's ready for construction. So it's similar here, as we meet with people, we met with them several times, like I said, 2021, 2022, as they were exploring and clarifying what they were looking for. We, I think we started talking about the use in 2022, I think that was when we, or our, well, the B7, when we're talking 2020, 21, where they hadn't chosen a property yet, we suggested the B4 or B5, because those are the places where they could do broadly what they wanted. The outdoor recreation is not allowable use in any business district, but that didn't come up till the very, till last minute. The the question came up in 2022 when they had selected the property B7. My impression is that they didn't realize there was a difference in B7. Despite, we told them there was. I think they had the impression it's a business district, therefore we can, we're just as good as if we're in the B4 or B5. That is what it is, people make make choices. They had options to to pursue if they chose to. We even suggested the idea of a planning unit development on the on the property that they have selected, because with a planning unit development, as you experienced with the Prestige Center, they can propose a set of uses for you that are a little more broad than the ordinance, underlying zoning district would otherwise allow. And you could, you could recommend approval of that, the Board of Appeals can approve it. It becomes part of the zoning of the property, just as it did with the Prestige Center when the property was owned PUD. They've chosen not to do that either, for their own reasons, and I respect them for it, but it doesn't change the fact that that's really the best solution at this point. The with the Board of Appeals action, the the question is significantly settled. The the remaining question is, if they do want to pursue what amounts to a public park, a large part of the property, that is going to be a problem, because there is no allowance for that in the B7. So we'll see what what comes of that, when the project comes before you. And that's a question that we'll simply have to address then, just as we address similar types of issues on any project that might come in. The, in terms of when we we talk to them about the the use, the set of uses and the B7 district, it certainly was something that we noted, that there's a difference between this district and the other ones. So there's a question about whether or not this would fit. But we also told them, the question is, is the planning commission's prerogative answer. We can't answer that. We could simply say, this is what the ordinance says, this is where you are, there seems to be a discrepancy here. You could certainly take it to the planning commission and ask them. And ultimately, if, you know, if the answer is no, then they simply either revise their plan, they could propose a text amendment to to change it, they could propose to re-use of the property to the B5 district, which is across the street from this property. Not the best solution, but it is, it's an option. They could propose a PUD, there were multiple paths that they could take for success, all of which, you know, have their own requirements to apply, but but all of them could easily be successful. So that's that's where we were, as I said, we ultimately went to the Board of Appeals and got got an answer from the Board of Appeals that's reflected here.
Other questions for Rodney from commissioners? Okay, thank you. So I think we're ready to move to the public hearing. So the announcement was published in the paper, it's on the township's website. Everyone was appropriately informed. And so this is an opportunity for the public to speak on the proposed text amendments. And so we want to give everyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak. So we'll have an orderly process, we'll recognize folks to give their comments. Once everyone who's spoken has, who wants to speak has had the opportunity to speak, we'll consider recognizing people for additional comments. We ask you to come to the podium, give your name and address for the minutes, and as I said, limit your comments to three minutes and address them to the planning commission. So the public hearing on PTEx 22-01, the zoning ordinance text amendments, known as Punch List Number Two, is open at 7:55. Is there anyone who would like to address the planning commission on this topic? I gather that Mr. Nelson, who spoke at the previous meeting, took my, I think it was my advice, but took our advice to submit his comments in writing. So Tara distributed those before the meeting, so you should all have a copy of that. Were there any other written comments received?
No, but I will, I will make a note, although this is dated November 28, it was received at 3 o'clock this afternoon via email, so that's why you're getting it at that.
Okay.
It's at 3 PM today?
3 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have an opportunity to read it, so. So I think those watching will probably have noticed that we don't have any audience members, and so there are not any any live comments. So the record shows that a written comment was received and let the record also show that there were no public comments, in person public comments offered. And so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:02. So we're we're next to questions from commissioners. So are there any questions or comments from commissioners on any of the proposed changes?
Yeah, I just reiterate, as I did back in, I believe it was October, in Section 3.19, C1, E, and G, I'm not in support of, so therefore I will be voting no tonight. I just, I feel that that leaves the gray area, just don't think those are necessary. We've already had, in my opinion, plenty of township overreach, and this only extends that even further. So I disagree with adding those two in there.
Will you say the two, B and C?
No, E and G on page eight or 49, depending on which numbers you're looking at. So it's technically 3.19, Section 3.19, C1, E, and G. Just as I had stated back in October, I think when we reviewed these the first time.
These are the conditions that the planning commission is supposed to use to determine permitted uses and density of a PUD.
Correct.
So I thought when we passed that last motion to go for, there was an option after that to have those taken out, right? Wasn't there?
Yeah.
And it didn't happen?
No, it was just, I think, it was just, it was just being passed to go to a public hearing, which is tonight.
Tonight.
So I wasn't satisfied with taking this to a public hearing, so that's why I voted no.
Right.
And if those two changes are made, I would absolutely vote yes, but but I don't anticipate that happening since it hasn't been addressed in the last two months. So I'm just getting ahead of it, that's all.
So you do, in the set of draft motion options that you have, one of them is, is, you could, you could recommend them as as presented, you could also recommend them with additional changes, so.
Correct.
That that is an option, and simply noting the additional change as part of the motion. That, that is an option, simply noting the additional change as part of the motion.
So I've been on, on board with your thoughts on that too, so.
If we recommend approval with additional changes, would we also need to add the additional proposed zoning ordinances? Or are those already included in the?
They're already included in the motion.
They are, okay.
You'll see, if you look at the motions, each, each one, for example, the top motion that simply recommends approval, recommends be adopted as presented with the additional proposed amendments to sections two and three.
Okay, okay.
But if this is turned, if this is turned down, then that also negates the, the B seven, what the church is trying to do, is that right?
No, it does, it, it, and thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to bring that up. This is very, something very important. It actually applies also to Mr. Nelson's written comments. The proposed amendments do not in any way alter the action that the Board of Appeals took with regards to the Thrive Community Church and their property that they have identified in their application. What the Z B A did, their action would continue to apply without alteration. And when they do come in with a site plan application, if that's what they choose to do, that, that information we referenced, we referenced the motion right in there. So this is what the Board of Appeals did, so that you're aware of it. I assume they'll probably put it right in the site plan, what the Board of Appeals did. So, nothing changes with regards to that. And frankly, the amendment is simply to clarify things along the lines of what the Board of Appeals was doing. And so, so the same thing, and this is something, just going back to Mr. Nelson's comment, he commented that our proposed changes to section, add section twelve point six, which is an updated, expanded section talking about the protections for non-conforming single-family dwellings. He, he notes in his, in his comments that somehow that would negate the, the action he has with regards to his particular property. And it does not in any way, does not alter it in any way. Frankly, his building permit, he's doing what he needs to do with regards to the second one of the property. And even if he didn't have a building permit, the actions that approvals he was given run with his land, period. So, all, all we're doing here, in fact, with section twelve point six, is actually expanding the ability and making, again, clarifying the expanding ability for folks that have a non-conforming single-family dwelling, which is basically a house that's in a business district, you know, or, or a house that, that was built years ago in a setback, something like that. It's somehow a violation of the ordinance, but lawful at the time. Expands their ability to, first of all, replace it if it's completely destroyed or damaged, but also allows them a greater ability to modernize that kind of structure. So, if they had a little bit more room, they can add a bedroom to it, that kind of thing. So, it does not in any way impact negatively either the Thrive Church or the Mr. Nelson's property.
Commissioner LaBelle, I have a question for you. Just going back to that page eight or forty-nine, you, you would like to see E and G completely removed?
Yeah, that's just my opinion, yes.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand. I mean, I, I, I could agree with you on G. I'm still kind of rehashing it on E. Would you mind kind of going over E again, why you think?
Yeah, well, I think the example that I had used last month was, or even might have been the month before, is that, so if, if, if I'm a developer and I come in and, and basically I've done my own market research and I, here's what we want to put in there, maybe one based on the market, or two could be based on what's more profitable for them. Whereas, you know, typically one-bedroom places aren't as profitable as maybe two and three because you've still got one kitchen with one person paying rent. Whereas, the other ones, you've got maybe two or three bedrooms with one kitchen. You can charge more, you got more square footage, you can charge more with the same amount, basically somewhat the same amount of cost into each unit. Maybe a little bit more based on the square footage.
Yeah.
But, but if, I, I don't want to have to come in and, a planning commission or an administrator is telling me, well, this is what I want to see, because that's what this would kind of do, may require. So, I, I, I just really don't like that vagueness of allowing a planning commission that may have no knowledge of their business on what to put there. So if they're going to do sixty units, whatever the number is, sixty units, and they've got it broken up into twenty, twenty, and twenty, but we want to see thirty, thirty, and ten, or sorry, thirty, twenty, and ten, I, I just don't think that it's in our purview to tell them what to build. And just in my opinion.
Right. I, I appreciate that. I mean, in G, I see we're reading it that maybe staff could require that. And E, it just says, "Planning commission may require." And am I reading that correctly? It isn't, that, that would be more for, if the planning commission would ask a variety of housing types. That's not necessarily telling, and I'm, I'm asking you, because this, this is something that...
That's the way I would interpret that.
The housing types, though, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just thinking out loud. I'm just asking you what, what you're doing, what types of housing.
Well, it says the planning commission may require that a variety of housing types be provided. So the planning commission, the way I would interpret that, if I'm standing in that podium up there as an applicant, that the planning commission could say in discussion that they'd like to see more of this, this, and this, based on what's presented. Therefore, a planning commission could deny a project based on, because they, they may require a different variety of housing types than what's presented. That's the way I interpret that. Now, if I'm interpreting it completely wrong, somebody please tell me. But that's the way me, I would interpret that, and I just don't like... I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a planning commission to tell me as a business owner what I've been doing my whole life, what to do on that site. It's my money, here's what I think should go there. If I meet all the required zoning ordinances.
Right.
I can do all that stuff, but you're going to tell me what I'm going to build there? I, I just, it doesn't sit well with me.
So, just thinking out loud again, I, thank you, that, I appreciate that. In our discussion, if we agree or disagree, if a motion was made, we can make the motion excluding, we can make the motion anything we want, I'm assuming. So we could say, maybe we like everything in here from the beginning to end, and we could all agree that E and G are out, so that's something we could just...
That's correct.
Part of the motion.
Yes.
Was, was just those two, was, there wasn't three of them, I thought?
No, that's the only two that I, that I recall, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Let me ask a question. To me, there's two, two angles to this, particularly to E. One would be to say to the applicant, "We want to see multiple, we want to see this type of housing, even though it's not in your proposal, and we're not going to consider this unless you put it in there." Another, another angle of this would simply be for a planning commissioner to look at this and say, "You know, I really think that this isn't necessar, as this is currently proposed, it isn't as good of a fit for our community as what I think we should be doing." And to me, that's the type of judgment, one of the types of judgments we're supposed to be making. And so my question to you is, do you think, do you think that is a reasonable judgment for a, a planning commissioner to make? Maybe they think that we need more of this type of housing, and yet the proposal is for this type of housing, so therefore, you know, "I'm, I'm just not going to support this particular P U D." And then it's up to the applicant to go back and decide, well, do they want to, you know, change their proposal and reapply, or do they want to do something else, or what have you? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
What do you, what's your opinion?
Well, that's, that's certainly one way to look at it, for sure. However, again, in a planned unit development, it's already going to be, in my opinion, maybe could be somewhat dense. I guess it depends on the scope, if it's all single-family homes, or if it's going to be a multi-unit. I mean, I, I think, I, but I, but I, I think the point is, is that you're asking someone to put certain stuff in that maybe they don't deem is, is worth it. I mean, so you would go, "Well, I, I, I don't, I don't really want that there." But again, so if they're putting in, I guess, there's too many hypotheticals, number one. But if they've got a mix of a little bit of everything, but you said, "Well, I want more of this and less of that," that's kind of where I'm coming from. Now, if you've got a planned unit development that somebody wants to do, you know, twenty single-family homes on whatever twenty acres, but you feel that maybe twenty single-family homes are, shouldn't be there, and you think that we need more affordable housing, or section eight housing, who's to tell me what I can do with that property? I mean, I, I mean, I, I guess that's my concern, is I just think that, I, 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 and I understand where you're coming from, but I still think the bigger picture is how, I don't want a planning commission telling me what I can and can't build. If it's a planned unit development, so what, what are the parameters that I can do there? So, if I have a planning commission, "Well, I need you to do six family homes, six single-family homes, five of these, four of these, three of those." I, I just don't think that's in our purview, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, does that, I mean, I think it's, it's, I think it's, it's tough to really know what comes up.
Right.
But at the same time, I mean, may require, just in my experience, I've, I've run into, I've been in town eight years, and I've seen planning commissions, city commissions, and administrative staffs completely overreach and overstep every step of the way.
Mm-hmm.
Well, most steps of the way. So, I'm coming from that perspective of watching that happen in my last eight years. I, I didn't do any of this. I played golf for a living. So coming in and just as a fresh set eye, I'm like, well, what about this, what about that? And it, to me, it's, it's really frustrating to watch.
Yeah.
So therefore, that's, that's the position that I come from.
Mm-hmm.
Watching municipalities do what they've done.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's why we, City Mount Pleasant started doing it, and there's a boatload of vacancies on Mission Street. So.
What I'm trying to get at, I think, with this is, I'm sympathetic to the idea that we shouldn't be overly prescriptive in trying to micromanage the projects. But on the other hand, the P U D is, is an option. It's something that, you know, they're asking us to approve something. And so, you know, you, you still have things like consistency with the master plan, and, you know, other sorts of things. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, if, if that language is not in there, do we still have the, the authority to just, you know, to not approve something on the basis that it just doesn't appear to be, you know, the right combination of, of stuff for the community? Does each individual planning commissioner still have that, that discretion? You know, because then you're not telling them, "Well, you have to do this," but we're also saying, "What you've proposed to us just doesn't, it's, just doesn't seem like what we should be doing with that property."
Well, I mean, my thought is, based on these other A, B, C, D, and F, not really F, but the one that really sticks out to me is C. I, I, I think there's enough in there to, if you thought that what's being proposed doesn't really fit, then I think you could hang your hat on letter C. "Uses in a P U D district shall not be hazardous, detrimental, or injurious to an environment or the public health, save your general welfare by reason of traffic, you know, et cetera." So I mean, I, I, I think if something that was being proposed by a developer that you go, "This really does not fit whatsoever, and it's pretty clear," then I think you could, you, you might be able to, I'm not an attorney, but you might be able to utilize, you know, letter C as maybe the reasoning why.
Perhaps.
We as a commission could, if somebody, if, both of these, we'll say, are gone, and somebody comes in and they want twenty single-family homes, and we all know as a commission that probably wouldn't be the best thing for the right reasons, let's just say we all know it's the right reasons. That's something we could still talk about. Without, without stopping the developer from continuing on with their project.
Yeah, I mean, you also have letter B. I mean, "P U D district shall be compatible with goals, objectives, policy, the master plan." So I get it, if, if they're coming in front of us that a P U D is allowable there, then you probably can't, you probably can't hang your hat on letter B, because that means it probably fits the master plan, and more likely that it's allowable in that area. So that's where I, I think C would probably give us the most leverage. I, I don't know what, what staff thinks, I'm just saying, reading these, C to me would give the planning commission the most leverage if we were in that position. I, I just, I, I've not, again, I, I preface everything I've said with, "I've only been doing this eight years." This, you know, working with municipalities, developing real estate, you know, leasing tenants, you know, commercial real estate, residential real estate. So, I mean, I still, I'm still learning, and, you know, and being a part of this board, I've learned a lot. But I, I, I just, I would prefer that it just be not as restrictive. And I think most developers that I've seen that have come in front of stuff, their projects, they all look great. I mean, it's not like they're trying to put some, you know, something that doesn't really fit there. I've, I've rarely seen that, but I've only been doing this eight years. So I've rarely seen a developer put something somewhere that just really doesn't even fit. It's like, that doesn't even belong there. I, I've not seen that yet.
If, if we did, if we left these in, then, let's just say we don't want to restrict the planning commission. We as a group just don't want to be restricted. We want to have the ability to, to ask or require. So we, we will use G as an example, and we ask the developer to come up with a market study. And they, they give us a market study from a reputable company, and the market study's just not necessarily favorable or unfavorable. Do we get to say no? I mean, I would, I would think, no, we couldn't do that.
I mean, I, I think you could.
Well, I think we could, but I mean, I...
If the market study showed that, I mean, whatever market study they did shows that it didn't warrant any, any of that, what they're going to build, and they wanted to build it anyway, then I think it would raise questions, me as a planning commissioner, like, okay, so the market study's showing that, but you still want to do this? I, I, it's not really my call, it's not my money.
Right.
So I mean, I'm, I mean, just because the market study doesn't support or indicates that what they want to build, maybe there isn't a market for it.
I'm just trying to think, I'm just trying to think outside, I'm just trying to think differently now. Trying to go against how I'm feeling. I mean, right now, I'm reading both of these, and I feel I would be okay with E and G not being here. I'm trying to, you know, so I, you know, could that be done? Yeah, could we do that? I, can we say it's not favorable or favorable, so could we say? I don't know.
Yeah, and I think if the majority of the people feel that everything in here as written is fine, I mean, we can vote on that. I mean, you already, you know where I stand on that. But if the majority of the people prefer these to be in there, that's okay. That's, that's why we have commissions, that's why we have multiple people.
Well, I'm agreeing, I, I'm agreeing with you right now, so I'm just trying to...
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with however we want to move forward with it. You know, like I said, I, I just, you know, I, I won't vote yes if it's presented as is, but that's just me. But if the majority of people are okay with that, then, then that's what should happen. It should, it should pass and go to the trustees. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just one opinion, one vote.
But we've had this discussion many times, and you and I, and I'm certainly not an expert either by any means, I mean, I, but I do talk to some, what I consider very legit builders in this community, in this area, and some legit real estate people in this area. And I think what you're saying is, this falls in line with the complaints that we're hearing from them, that it is just such a restrictive area at times, they just go elsewhere. You know, they just go to, they go to Clare, they go outside the township. I've heard that, I've heard people say that. People that I can, you know, that I have a lot of faith in that what they're saying is, is not just to bash a, a city or a township, but it's just a legitimate feeling that they're... but it's just a legitimate feeling that they're getting, and, and you're right, the proof is in the pudding with so many different, uh, with so many vacant buildings and so much, um, seeming that I've seen building outside the township. So maybe what we've been doing isn't the best thing for the community, so maybe we need to look at it so we can tell some of these developers, okay, we're gonna try to take some of the restrictions. There's still ordinance, uh, um, that you have to comply with. Actually, there's quite a few different, you know, policies and rules you have to comply with, but maybe we're not gonna be quite so restrictive or have the ability even to be so restrictive. It's kinda on you, Mr. Developer, to know what you're doing, that it's gonna be, I mean, isn't that kinda what, what you're saying is that falls in line with what we're hearing up kinda on the street? That these things kinda ham, are hamstrung to the people?
Well, a hundred percent. However, at one of our meetings, you know, Commissioner Buckley, as I brought it up, since no one was willing to go on record, he, he said that basically the problem in his mind doesn't exist.
Yeah.
So, and, and our manager said that, and our township manager said that at a trustee meeting as well. So, a- again, th- they're happening, but if, if, just because somebody isn't willing to come forward, doesn't mean it's not happening. To me, that's putting your head in the sand.
Yeah, and I have.
Not you specifically, I'm talking about the other two folks.
And I have built buildings, and I can tell you, and I, I'm in the process of doing more, but I can tell you, and, and, and they're not in unit township, but not for any of these reasons. Um, if that, uh, municipality didn't allow me to go there, I wouldn't go back and do much compli- I'd just go somewhere else. It's just easier. Why would you come back? You already been told, no. You're already getting resistance. If I'm getting resistance, I'm just gonna go somewhere else. I'm not gonna come to a planning commission meeting and, you know, crying my beer only to be told probably once again, too bad. I'm just gonna go somewhere else, and that's what I'm hearing that people are doing. So, you know, I'm good with starting to take off a little bit of restrictions, not to allow, you know, just a shotgun approach for anybody that wants to come in and do whatever. But we have those policies in place where they can't do that. But I, I agree, I, we're just, we're too restrictive. It's, you know, this is why I'm here, so if we can show a little bit of grace here to people and say, okay, you know, follow the ordinances, follow, you know, the policies and, yeah, market studies are expensive. You know, all this stuff is just money, and when you're trying to build a business, and every time if somebody throws a zinger at you, well, we need this, this, and this, it's time and it's money. And so they're like, ah, I'll just go somewhere else. That's the feedback I'm get, I'm getting, and I think, and I think different people, you're getting the same thing.
Yep, a hundred percent.
So, um, if there's no more discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. So I make a motion, uh, to recommend to the Township Board of Trustees at the PT XT twenty-two dash zero one, Proposed Amendments to Sections Two, Definitions, Three, Zoning Districts and Maps, Five, Supplemental Zoning District Standards, Six, Standards Applicable to Specific Land Uses, Seven, General Provisions, Nine, Parking, Loading, and Access Management, Twelve, Non-Conformities, Thirteen, Administrative Organization, and Fourteen, Administrative Procedures of the Zoning Ordinance Number Twenty-Dash-Zero-Six, be adopted with the additional Proposed Amendments to Sections Two and Three and the following changes. Uh, eliminate under C permitted uses and densities E and G.
I'll support that.
Can you repeat the very last part of that?
Um, and the following changes, eliminate C, which is permitted uses and density, E and G.
Do you want a section?
Is that, am I wrong, wrong section?
No, you're right. Can we just add to the segment references that, uh, remi- uh, eliminate subsections E and G from Section three point one nine point C point one?
Okay.
Should we say it again, Rodney?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a long one.
E and G from?
Yeah, it elim- eliminate subsections E and G from Section three point one nine point C point one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those are the only two, not a third one, cause I kept hearing C and E and G.
Well, C is the permitted use of density, yeah.
Well, but there is a C.
He's about to eliminate all of it.
So in, 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 in section C.
Yeah, three point one nine point C point one, E and G.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion was made by Williams and the second was by?
Rose.
By Gross, okay. Further discussion. So this is the, this is the whole ball of wax. Was this, did anybody have any other parts of this that they wanted to, to discuss? Great. This is to send the whole kit and caboodle on with those, with that one change. So let me just ask Rodney one more time. It's your position that the changes in twelve point six are, if anything, more expansive or, or more, how would you characterize it? We're not, the, the, a perception that, that it's somehow making it more restrictive is inaccurate. Is that all right?
That is correct. The, the, the goal here is to, uh, provide clarity. This, this section, uh, existing subsection J, the new subsection twelve point six, I call it the mortgage clause, you know, mortgage and insurance clause. Mortgage companies in particular, and sometimes insurance companies, want to know that that, that house that they're, that they have mortgage on or that they're insuring can be rebuilt even if it's completely wiped out to the ground. And, uh, if we're non-conforming structures, that is normally not an option, frankly, but the whole notion of zoning with regards to non-conforming structures is that they eventually go away. The idea is to, to allow them to remain as they are, but eventually they would be replaced. That's the, the theory behind non-conforming structure regulations. Now, that, that is a theory, and that goes back to the beginning of zoning. Uh, from, uh, from a practical standpoint, we have to help, uh, work with people. If we don't have the, the ability, uh, for, if, if non-conforming single family dwelling to be replaced or is destroyed, then nobody that needs a mortgage can buy it, and so it typically is in the hands of landlords rather than homeowners. Uh, and while land, we have, we work with many great landlords, we have an excellent group of landlords in the community. We certainly want to encourage people to be able to open homes, and, uh, there's no reason not to allow this kind of protection. So the section twelve point six is all about providing clarity that, that provides, uh, a level of comfort to primarily mortgage companies. Uh, it is exactly the language that, that has been used in other communities. The, the problem with subsection J is it was, it was, it was too, uh, vague. Uh, it, it, it did allow, uh, for things, but it, it also appeared to allow for things that, that were beyond really what could be done. Essentially, what, uh, the subsection J, as it was worded, could potentially allow s- a, a, I think, non-conforming single family home in business district, for example, to, to build far more than what could normally be built there, simply because it happened to have this protection. So twelve point six brings clarity to it, but it also expands that protection at the same time.
Is there, um, in a non-conformity, if, so for example, if it, if it burns twenty-five percent down, they can still rebuild what they want? Is there a percentage in there? Cause I know the city had a percentage in theirs when they redid their ordinance.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to go back a little, but you're right. Exactly. It's, it's something along that line. I think it, it's something related to the value, uh, that's lost. Uh, you know, uh, percentage of the, certain percentage of the excess value, certain percentage of it, state-wise, I, I can't recall it this specific example, but.
Yeah.
That's exactly the case. So, and unfortunately, it doesn't take a lot. If you have a fire, you could very quickly get up to that, that, that damage and value, even though the house or structure may, you know, be salvageable. Uh, and, uh, and the, and because the whole idea is that these structures should be replaced with ones that conform their ordinance. Uh, and, uh, and that simply doesn't work well for single family dwellings in particular. Uh, so, uh, and we do have cases where, and, and we have single family dwellings in business districts, because we have areas of our own business many years ago. But the homes are still there and occupied. Uh, and so having these protections is, is valuable.
And I don't, and I don't know what these percentages are here. I just know in the city, you know, we, we were able to meet with Jacob Kane and some other property owners that were in this. It was the M five before it was rezoned, where it was the sixty-four, sixty-five, basically where a lot of the, um, it'd be south of High Street, but north of, I think it's Bellows. Um, and it was on Franklin, Maine, and I forget the other street. But there was about sixty-five units in there that by rezoning this M five to all single family, which is all student rentals, pretty much. There was only one gentleman that was still living in his house that he'd been there like, I don't know, fifty, sixty years. So he was the only one that was still in there that was not a rental. So basically, when they rezoned all those, all of those became non-conforming uses. And so most of the owners went and appealed their property taxes, because now it's a non-conformity, so it's not worth as much, just for what he stated, because hard to insure it, number one, loans, number two. So we were able to work with the city to make that percentage so it wasn't as damaging. So instead of, I mean, I don't know what the number was, but say if twenty-five percent was damaged, then it's now you, you, you have to demo it and you rebuild under the new circumstances. Well, I think we gotta move to maybe like twenty, like, uh, fifty percent. So if fifty percent of it was to be considered destroyed, then at that point, you, you'd have to, you'd have to rebuild. Um, I will say there were two of those that had happened within the last thirty years, and those two property owners decided not to build under the, under the current zoning ordinance. So those property, those properties have been vacant for almost thirty years. So, so again, that's a little bit of, and this is even before the new ordinance, there was some restrictions in place, that the property owner goes, why would I rebuild? I can only put a single family home on there. I used to have a home that I could put six people in, in a rooming and boarding license, but now I can only put a single family home on there, which means I can, I can only rent to, up to two unrelated, or a single family. That's it. I can't put in three unrelated into a unit. So the, the owner goes, it's not, it's not worth it, so it's, it's vacant. So I, again, those are just some of the concerns I have when we start to restrict stuff, um, that starts, stuff starts not to get developed, which is, I think, is the opposite of what we're trying to do. So.
Other questions or comments?
Did, did we wanna do a roll call vote?
Yeah, we're gonna have a roll call vote. I just wanna make sure we're, I didn't wanna cut off discussion if we're, if anybody has anything else. Um, I guess I just wanted to briefly just, I'm looking at this letter again. The zoning administrator. Zoning administrator is Peter? Okay, but in the, in the, in section two, it does, under zoning administrator, it does say, the director of the township's community and economic development department, which I believe is Rodney, and any person, persons, or firm as de- as delegated by the director to have responsibility for administration and or enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. So based on that, I guess you would say that either one of you could potentially have the authority in thirteen five?
So, uh, the answer to your question is yes. Uh, as a department director, it's ultimately my responsibility, under our township manager, to, uh, have responsibility over the, the functions of the zoning administrator, just as I have responsibility over the functions of our rental inspector, our building official, our building services clerk. Uh, that's my role as department director. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Nelson, uh, has the benefit of, of his FOIA request, which of course collected all of our emails, all of our notes, uh, all of our drafts of various things, and so he, as he noted here, he got to see the, the sausage being made, uh, as we were, as, as, as determination was being put together for, for his request, uh, in, in that July, I think, time period. Uh, and has, as he noted, there was collaboration between Peter and I. Peter, as zoning administrator, he is, he's, uh, he's hired and assigned those, those responsibilities, uh, and he does them very well. Uh, those responsibilities are not only in our ordinance, but they're also, uh, listed in, in the, uh, adopted job description for the position. Uh, and, uh, so in that role, uh, for this particular case where, where determination was being made as to whether this, uh, what, what, what was this structure, what, what, what exactly was going on? Uh, I'll just give you a quick background. This, this property has two houses on it. Uh, these houses came out of the city in the late nineteen sixties, when Central Michigan University was expanding like crazy, and whole blocks of houses were being removed. Uh, a number of, of those houses ended up in the township. This site is one of those. So, so they basically picked up a, uh, the principal dwelling and a carriage house, essentially, a small secondary house, and carried them out of the city and dropped them on this lot. Uh, they did that, it, it, as it turned out, uh, they did that just before the township adopted its first zoning ordinance. Uh, this was done in the late nineteen sixties. We were able to find that out. Unfortunately, we didn't have records of it. The township, uh, we, we have some gaps in our records because of, of the flood a number of years ago. Some cases, we have records all the way back, other cases, we don't. Uh, this one, we were able to, to, uh, work out the timing, uh, with the assistance of the Central Michigan District, District Health Department, uh, because they were able to provide when they, when they put wells, uh, above permits on that property. So we determined, anyway, so, uh, Peter did the initial review. He, he, he was, uh, did the history, uh, and ultimately, uh, wrote the, the, the initial draft of a, of a determination. My role as director, uh, I reviewed it. I offered some recommendations, uh, and, and he went back, looked at it, made some changes. It was collaborative, collaborative effort. Uh, Peter is not, uh, he, he does not have the academic credentials of a professional community planner. He doesn't have, uh, certification as a professional community planner. He does have certification as a zoning administrator, and he has a tremendous amount of experience. Uh, but it is completely appropriate that there's collaboration between the two of us dealing with zoning issues, and there is. And, uh, I regularly defer to, to Peter at his determinations related to zoning actions. As I think he could attest, if he wishes, uh, if, if the cases are, I disagree with him, and I've said, no, you, you, it's your, it's your call. Go, go make that choice. So I, I appreciate his service and his expertise and his recommendations.
Thanks. All right. Any other comments from commissioners? So the motion on the floor is to, uh, recommend the zoning text amendment punch list two with the one proposed change of removing items E and G from Section, uh, three point one nine, is that right? C? It's been moved and seconded. Uh, so we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Gross?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
LeBeau?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Len?
Yes.
Federico?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you. So that is going to the board. The next item on our agenda is the proposed resolution to participate in the state's redevelopment-ready communities program.
Well, thank you. You, you saw this, uh, last month. We had, had a start of conversation, uh, about this. And so I bring back to you, uh, the proposed resolution. This is a resolu- proposed resolution of the Board of Trustees. So this role, you, you would be a recommending body, uh, related to it. Uh, we talked about some, some of the benefits of, of, uh, the, uh, Michigan Economic Development Corporation's redevelopment-ready communities program. Uh, thanks for the discussion tonight about, uh, encouraging redevelopment, uh, encouraging new development opportunities. All of that is incorporated into this program and the best practices that I shared with you before. Uh, some of those best practices, we've already incorporated. We certainly can do more, and there's always opportunities for improvement. And so participating more formally in this program gives us the opportunity, you have some additional technical, uh, assistance, particularly in outside, uh, evaluation and, and essentially a report, uh, as part of that potentially, that, uh, we can take a look at. And especially as part of our master plan, I think there's real value in, in, in engaging more formally with this effort and perhaps incorporating some of these, these best practices into the master plan. Uh, and, and so with that in mind, you have, you have the. And so with that in mind, you have, you have the proposed resolution. As noted at the top of our report, the redevelopment-ready communities program is voluntary, and it is a no-cost program. There's, there's no cost to the township to participate. And we can participate without ever receiving certification. There are things that we simply decide we aren't willing to do. We still benefit from that program. And there are, there are a couple of kind of levels. They have an essentials level, and then they have a certification level. So we can decide where we want to fall ultimately as we, as we work through the details. So with, with that in mind, we're pleased to recommend this to you and recommend that it be sent on favorable basis to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Rodney on this? Okay, so the, the action, if there is to be an action, is, would be a motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees that this draft resolution be adopted.
Yeah, the second, on page seventy-seven, at the bottom, we have recommended action that you could use as a motion if you wish, just to support the township's participation.
Is there, is there any negatives associated with this decision?
No, it's entirely voluntary. We, it's simply an opportunity, if, if we choose to work with the, the organization. Just to give you an idea, as I said, it's a program of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They have established professional staff of the MEDC on a regional basis. Basis, we were part of region five of the state. There are ten regions. And if we were to participate, one, one of the first steps would be that they would come in and essentially look over what we're doing. And there'd be some interviews with staff, they'd look over ordinance, our master plan, some conversations with the planning commission, others. And ultimately, that would generate a report that's tied back to their best practices that you took a look at earlier. And it would identify strengths, it would identify weaknesses. That report would likely make some recommended, recommendations for changes. Then it's up to us what we do with it. Certainly, there, I think there's a real opportunity as part of the master plan. That, we have a good master plan, and it does incorporate some of these best practices. And that was referenced by the consulting team that, when they came before you, back in two thousand sixteen. At that time, the program was different. It's, it's been revamped, frankly, been made easier to work with than it was back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. But nonetheless, some of those ideas were incorporated into the master plan. I think there are opportunities even to do more. Anytime we can help to encourage redevelopment, for the reasons that have been discussed tonight, I think there's value in, in looking at it. And there is no downside. There's no penalty to it, and as I said, there's no cost. This is simply, for the MEDC, what they get out of it is they, they gain communities that have, gave a greater understanding of economic development principles and potentially gain more opportunities, more sites where they can, you know, they can encourage new businesses to come to, to a community to develop.
I'll make a motion to support the township's participation in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's updated statewide redevelopment-ready communities program in pursuit of a redevelopment-ready community certificate, certification, certification, and to recommend to the Board of Trustees that the proposed resolution attempt be adopted.
Support.
Motion was by Williams, seconded by Thering. Further discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Williams?
Yeah.
Glad?
Yes.
Squelito?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So those were our agenda items. Next item is extended public comment. So if anyone would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, they are invited to do so at this time. Give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comments open at eight fifty. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up. Next item is final board comment. So any comments from board members? One thing I do want to announce is a reminder that three planning commissioners have terms expiring on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And there actually will be only one more, I believe only one more scheduled meeting between now and then. The January meeting will take place, but the February meeting will be after that. So if your term is expiring on two fifteen, twenty-three, and you're interested in being considered for another term, you should submit an application to that effect relatively soon. Other comments from board members?
I did have one comment. I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're good. Go ahead.
Something I forgot to mention when going over the budget. One thing that, we did make another change in the fee area for two thousand twenty-three. We had a little bit of a, a couple of different discussions on this in regards to the water on and off and the non-payment. For example, if you didn't pay your water bill and we had to shut you, your water off, maybe you couldn't afford it, or, or for whatever reason. We made some changes on that. The change that we made for the water on and off, so for example, if you had to have your water turned, you were doing something at your home and you had to have the water department come out and shut the water off and turn it on, turn it back on when you were completed, was ninety-one dollars each time. We changed that to forty-five. The, the non-payment, so for somebody, unfortunately, you know, and, and in our minds, we were thinking single moms or dads, and just for whatever reason couldn't afford their water bill and would get shut down. It, it was proposed at one sixty-five to one twenty, and then we agreed at forty-five. And that's a one-time fee. And the fee schedule, or the fee schedule, all the fees were developed by cost of study. A, a company did a cost of study. So they were not just numbers that the, the staff or, or, you know, the administration sat down and just said, well, let's just put this. It was all done, I believe, in twon- twenty twenty. So, but just over, through the discussion that we had over some of the stuff, that was just, that was a, I thought it was noteworthy.
I just want to make a comment, just, you know, I know sometimes, you know, we're, we're in the minutia of some of these things that come in front of us. But, but overall, ordinances, the one that we have, the one that the city's done, there's a number of great things in these ordinances that, that the people that have done them have done a good job. So they're easier for developers to follow. It's more clear-cut. There's more stuff that's actually legal than, you know, that they, you know, just doing the right thing with cleaning things up. So as a developer, and, and in real estate, I'm very appreciative of, of that stuff. So I, I don't want that to get lost in some of the stuff that maybe I disagree with. So I just wanted to mention that. And then number two, kind of this, this redevelopment-ready community. I remember the city had done that. Do you remember when they did that? Was it maybe four years ago?
I believe so, yeah.
So I, I, there, again, there's no cost. I mean, what a, what a great thing to have them come in and kind of assess, walk through, kind of, maybe, kind of like do an audit. Would you call it that kind of type of thing? I mean, just to kind of check and see? So I, I think it's a great asset to be able to have them do that. I, I just, I hope that what comes of that, and it really didn't happen at the city, but, you know, redevelopment-ready means you're ready. And, and we've not experienced that at the city. I mean, the last year, I think, we have, with, with a little bit of some changeover and some, you know, the last year that Jacob Kane was there, there was some softening, so to speak, amenability, trying to work with you. I, I just, I just hope that, that, that you take this, that we take this title, if we do go through all this, and, and actually walk the walk. You know, it says we're redevelopment-ready, so let's make sure that we are and that we're amenable. That, don't just put the title out there just to have it out there, but not be amenable. So I'm all for doing this, because I think it's a great exercise, and I think it's great for us as a township. But I'm hoping that, that we'll see the flexibility and the amenability that, that we haven't seen. So.
Other comments? I don't want to take up a lot of time, because we're possibly, we're looking at getting out of here by nine o'clock. But this is our last meeting of the, of two thousand twenty-two. All right, we're heading into two thousand twenty-three. One of the big things on the horizon for us, then, is the, what to do with the master plan. How much of a, because as you've said before, the law simply says that we're supposed to look at the master plan and decide if we're happy with it, if we want to make any changes to it, blah, blah, blah. The, five years ago, when we did this, we, it essentially became a, a hundred percent rewrite, even though the previous one was only about five years old. And so I guess my question is, are you already planning for this? And is, is, is stuff going to start to be kind of pushed our way? Or is it the ball in, in our court to decide first what we want to do?
So with your agreement, we'll, we'll put this item on the agenda. And so they have it as an agenda item. We call it master plan review. And we'll provide some information on what, what the state act requires, and we'll certainly provide some, some perspective from staff related to the project and possibilities. We have done some planning. It was not mentioned in part of the budget conversation, but we did ask for, and there is money included in the budget, for a potential update to the master plan. That doesn't mean you have to update. Money can be put back into the general fund if that's ultimately decided you don't want to make any changes. But we did want to make sure that we had in the budget the ability to pursue that, an update, if you choose to. From my perspective, I think there are opportunities, and it's opportunities to improve on what you already have. We do have a, a challenge, and that is that, that if we do update the plan, it is what is said to be a rewrite, because there is no formatted Word document for this. That, as was common at the time for many big consulting firms. They provided a PDF file, here you go, here's your master plan, but they held back. The, the edit, editable file, the Word file or the publisher file, whatever the format that you, paintmaker.
Really?
And yeah, it was absolutely common. At, at, at me in the consulting business, it was never my practice. I gave, gave them everything. Here you go, here's all the files. But many of the big firms didn't, because first they wanted to be able to come back and revise it later. In this particular case, the firm that did the work doesn't really exist. They were bought out by another firm. The files that were, are, files that, that were, that were available ended up on the server, I think, in Colorado. I think it's where we, where we finally been working with, this, what's now called Safe Build. It was called LSL finding at the time. Yeah, because we were actually looking for a, the original files for the future land use map, our GIS. Specialists wanted one of those. And, and so they didn't hunt down the document. They didn't provide us what they had. But it wasn't much. We were able to make the GIS person happy, but, but we didn't have any of the PDF files for the actual document.
You can save those as Word documents and then just write on them.
You can, and, and we have, but the formatting is lost. We, we can certainly get the text, but it is still going to be significantly updated, because all the formatting that you see there would have to be redone. And it's not necessarily that. Frankly, if, if you were, if you were to decide updating, we wouldn't want to get a consulting firm involved, because it is a bigger project than, than we would do with staff. We certainly, staff would support us. We did, we did, when we, our ED board updated their downtown development plans and tax and financing plans, we hired a consultant that did much of the, the labor of that. So that consultant, I'm sure, would take up the files we have. Like I said, we have, we do have a Word file that'd be pulled out of the PDF. So we give them all those files, and so it would help somewhat in terms of moving forward. But there are, there simply, there are opportunities to do more with master plan. To, in terms of being, supporting economic development, for example, and supporting redevelopment of the commercial corridors. I think there's some areas where master plan, updates of master plan policies could actually benefit those things.
Okay. Well, be thinking about that, because that is going to be coming in two thousand twenty-three. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay. Well, enjoy your holidays, and we've completed our agenda. So we'll stand in German and hold Daniel.